Find the attendance roster so the clerks can keep a good track of who's here. And we'll go forward. So at this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Tyler Erns to the Trinity Luther Church to come up and give us our invocation. He rise.
Let's begin. Amen to the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dearest Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day you've given us. Tonight, we thank you so much for gathering all of us together for this meeting tonight. And for the people that are here for this meeting, we give them all their discussion and may the decisions they make serve the betterment of this town, Guyman. With us today and every day in all we do. As in your sense, may we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Setzer, would you lead us in the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before I wrap the gavel, a little reminder, tonight's Fat Tuesday, but also tomorrow's Valentine's Day, so don't forget the second one. Call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call and determination of a quorum.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Alvedres?
Present.
Mr. Setzer?
Present.
Ms. Sanchez?
Here.
Mr. Idson?
Here.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is proclamation declaring the week of February 12 through 18 as Business Professionals of America Week. I think we've got some folks here to celebrate that with us. Ms. Hale, President, Har- Harley, excuse me. Why don't you all come up, bring all your people up here and we'll do this proclamation and let you introduce everybody and we'll celebrate you youngsters. Okay, let me read this and then you can introduce everybody. Whereas the school is concerned with the business education and training of students for productive, satisfying careers, and whereas Business Professionals of America is recognized by the United States Department of Education as a national career and technical student organization and an integral part of career and technical education, and whereas Business Professionals of America has members in 23 states preparing for careers as tomorrow's business professionals, and whereas Business Professionals of America is helping to develop leadership abilities, competency in business, information technology, and office occupations, and interest in the American business system. Therefore, I, Kim Peterson, mayor of the City of Guyman, do hereby proclaim the week of February 12 through 18 to be Business Professionals of America Week in the City of Guyman, State of Oklahoma. Let me sign this and I'll come down and give that to you and you can introduce everybody.
So who's our president?
Deja.
All right. There you go. Turn around. Everybody turn around. Anybody? I'm going to shot.
I just call photobomb. I don't know what to get to.
Okay. Turn around here. Hold that up there.
I am Deja Harley and I am the president.
My name is Jessica Cohen and I am the vice president.
My name is Yara Cole and I am the historian.
My name is Alexis Perkins and I'm the treasurer.
My name is McKinley Burns and I'm a member.
And of course, third leader, Mrs. Bayton. So thank you, folks, and good luck. Congrats places for all you do. Let's get around.
It's all of them running up the decent. All right. Agenda item number four is approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion. We approve consent agenda, item four.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve ordinance number 859 and ordinance amending section 2-155 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Guyman, providing invoice payment procedures, adding the finance director as an authorized approver, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency. Do I have any discussion or a motion? Or do we need? Any questions?
I don't.
I make a motion. We approve ordinance number 859 and ordinance amending section 2-155 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Guyman, providing invoice payment procedures, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict wherewith, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Make a motion.
And I make a motion. We declare an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to declare an emergency.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 24-03, a resolution establishing a per-person admission charge of $5 for organized soccer play events at the Nash Soccer Event Complex.
Good evening, council. I'm Ginger Clevenger, Assistant City Manager. I'd like to give you a little bit of background on kind of what we've been working with. And this is basically in regards to the Nash Soccer Complex and offsetting our expenses with revenue with a revenue source. As the usage of the Nash Soccer Complex has increased, so has additional maintenance due to wear and tear of the facility. And also, the city is physically responsible for 1.8 million that is due this June. There is a 10-year turf warranty, but with high usage, we are expected to have a 10-year, the 10 years of wear in under seven years of span. This year, the Parks Department has implemented field rotations. Some of the additional expense considerations are salaries, equipment, and supplies that all come from the city's budget. These expenses include things like mowing, repairs, cleaning, and more. The field scheduling also is maintained through the city. Currently, scheduling is maintained at City Hall. Going online would allow accessibility and flexibility, so not only would we be putting on ticketing systems through there, we would also be doing the field schedule and the rotations of that on there as well. The city does require a contract and payment that can be accepted there, so it does make it more accessible for the individuals to be able to reserve the fields. It will still be maintained here through the system. We currently have one of our personnel managing that, and they'll still be the ones with oversight through our dashboard. What we're presenting to you is a ticketing software system called Hometown Ticket Spicket that allows the city to sell tickets online through our personal digital box office and allows customers to buy tickets directly 24/7. This is a point-of-sale system that allows customers to pay by debit or with credit card and making it convenient for those who tend to pay with card at the gate. Digital tickets can be printed after their purchase is complete. Fans receive mobile-friendly digital tickets via email where they can print or display them on their phones to get into the games. The entire process is automated, so the city does not have to worry about physically selling tickets. This streamlines gate entry with no need to handle cash or exchange paper tickets, if that's the way we choose to handle that. Tickets can be scanned or redeemed by downloading the free Hometown Gate app for the iOS or Android on their tablets or on their mobile devices. Staff at the gates will simply hold the validation prompts on the customer's phone until the tickets are redeemed or by scanning their paper tickets. The revenue for the city, it reduces the worry about carrying cash and making change for events. With secure online payments and credit card processing, there is no need for staff to do bank deposits after every game. The system records ticket sales data in a dashboard account created specifically for the city. With real-time online reporting, you can view all event information across venues and departments in one central online location, which is our city's dashboard, our background information. This improves the cash flow. It serves as a payment processor account for the city where you can continuously receive online payments as tickets are purchased even before game days occur. It collects customers' email in a database where you can also send them promotions. This also provides solutions to other issues that we currently have. The city can use this system when they host events for city activities such as performing arts, fairs, festivals, possibly the swimming pool or park pavilions. The list goes on. So Hometown tailors for your specific events. You can do concession stand reservations. Concession stands can be ran through the Hometown database. The field reservations, again, you can do fundraisers. The city is exploring several avenues to use with this application. An additional bonus that we are provided by Hometown is in-app advertisement banners. This is an additional source of revenue that we could utilize in there. They offer active links to refer customers to the advertiser's website. If they decide that they want to run a promotion for their business, they can do that as well, and so that's an additional source for us. Or they can be used for city's events advertising as well. Not to mention, they have dedicated support staff for their customers, and they're also providing us with team training as needed. Riley and Austin is who I have been working with, and they have been nothing but exceptional to utilize this system. They have built a fantastic replica of our fields, the Nash Stadium, and so you can go down and you can look at the maps and you can look at all the events and you can also look at, if we decide to do concession stand reservations in the future, we can also host that through there. So it gives us live links for all of the fields, all three. Let's talk a little bit about the needed revenue. Through processor AI, our analytics software, I took a look at the foot traffic over the 12-month period from October of 2022 to September of 2023, and that was approximately 105,000 people that walked through those gates for approximately $500,000 plus in revenue. Our Parks Director, George, he can also attest to how much wear and tear is happening to that facility, and if George would like to speak a little bit on that, I would like to turn that floor over to him. Thank you, council, and if you do have any questions for me, feel free to ask those.
For those who don't know me, my name is George Gussman. I'm the Park Director, and just like the Assistant City Manager brought out, we have seen a lot of tear and wear in the turf fields. That's why we started rotating them now. The purchase of new equipment is somewhat expensive. We have to repaint every year for the fields, accommodate smaller goals and fields for 12 and under, and some of you know already, 7 and under for the little kids to play also. Vandalism has been a little bit of an issue. We have installed cameras at the soccer complex now to control a lot of that going on over there. We have to replace nets, our backstop nettings. You know, weather is taking a toll on them. They're going to have to be replaced here in the near future. So there's a lot of situations that this, if you guys allow us to pass this fee, will help us to be able to compensate a lot of those tear and wear, a lot of those maintenance issues that come around with so many people or all that traffic as the Assistant City Manager brought up. I don't know if you guys have any questions as far as...
I have some questions for Ginger. You probably said it already, but can you restate, whenever somebody wants to reserve the fields, is this the main system that we're going to go through?
Yes, and they still can come up here if they're not really quite sure how to work the system and reserve. If there's, a lot of times, there's a little bit of a learning curve to that, and so we're going to do the background training with a couple of the key staff that normally work on this, so they can come down and still go through our staff to be able to get in there and get it reserved. But it would be one of the key systems to do that, and really, that's to alleviate reservation complications that we've had in the past, is really what it is, because sometimes the field's been reserved and there's been people on it already. And so this kind of gives them a method to know, hey, that has really been reserved, and they can look at, the public can see it as well.
So are we talking about reservations for a tournament or just reservations for like any recreational game that...
It would be any organized play out there, so any tournaments, anything like that would be...
So anybody that wants to go out there and play is still free to play for free?
Yeah, there is still practice that they can do, so we're just talking about games is really...
Like tournaments or leagues, basically.
So why would it have to be $5 per person? Wouldn't it still be the fee for the team and for the organized event?
So that would be guests, so not everybody's a player. Not everybody's a part of the team, not everybody's a player, if that makes sense.
So like, if the league charges an amount, that player's fee is part of their entry to the gate, is basically what he's asking?
Like, so if they do belong to one of the organizations and they come on and they play, I think that would be something to be worked out. I think our considerations are that there's already organized events that do happen, and I think our consideration was that it would be guests of that.
Of the player.
How we had anticipated that.
What does this cost?
That's a very good question. So it is offset in that $5. It's offset with a fee that is passed to the customer, so it's roughly, it's under a dollar, and that's how they make their fee to process. In the likelihood that we didn't have $3,000 or more, it would be a fee of $3,000 to the city. I don't anticipate that happening.
Is that a month or a year?
It's for a year, and it's for any facility. So let's say that we do decide to put on other facilities. It's all-inclusive, so if we decided that we wanted to take pavilion reservations or if we wanted to utilize this for other avenues that we take funds already, we could do that and that would still count towards that $3,000.
So it's a fee, fee per transaction?
It is a fee per transaction.
Minimum 3,000?
Yes.
And then from there, you keep going on per transaction?
Yes, that is correct.
Well, is there like a ticket booth or some sort out there at the field complex?
It would just be manned at a gate, just like, so I'm a very experienced user with this. I attend, I've got a grandchild who plays basketball in Amarillo, and this is a system that they utilize. So you just show up and typically, there's a table sitting there or somebody at the gate, and I have my cell phone, and I show them that I purchased my tickets, and they, actually, they don't hold the button to redeem it. They make me hold the button to redeem it so they don't touch my phone, really. So I hold that button to redeem it, and then I show it to them, and they validate that it's two people that are walking through, and it looks just like a ticket to a ballgame, is what it looks like. So somebody there at the gate will typically do that. And we have worked that with staff to where we would rotate people out and be able to man that. There's other issues that come along with it. George can attest to that, and it's not issues that are perceived with ticketing or manning that, but there's other things like making sure that the individual who is out there can also police things like behavior and vandalism and stuff like that.
So we're not passing a resolution for total usage for all of the parks instead of, like, this just seems like it's concentrated at the Nash Soccer Complex, but it seems like we want to use it for all the facilities, so why aren't we wording the, the wording of the resolutions all off for me?
I think that this one is just knowing that we're going to start out and give it a try and make sure that it is something that is palatable to kick off, is the reason why. And then I think we would like to present to council additional items.
Okay, because any of the organized soccer games that I've been a part of out there already, there weren't any city officials out there making sure that somebody was collecting money or even present, to be honest. So are we going to now be paying staff to be out there to work the gate, to make sure people were paying the app?
Yes, that would be...
So that's another added expense? And on the 100,000 foot traffic that you had earlier, so your proposed revenue that we would be making was around 500,000, but is that, your foot traffic, was that on just the events that were happening during games or is that regular foot traffic for all personnel when we were there playing recreationally and just for fun?
It's pretty much like your active times, like the weekends. That's where I pulled that.
So you can't really use those numbers to help with revenue because that's not people that would be getting charged in this situation? You're only going to be charging people when we have an event there, right?
It's a, it would be an average through the entire year, is what it is. It's an average the entire year, so it's not saying that you're active every month either, but it is saying that there's a potential of that many people that are using that field during the busy times. So yes, could it be skewed? It certainly could. It might not be 500,000, but it sure could be 300,000 plus. And we're not, we aren't counting kids, but AI, what it does is it tracks anybody with a cell phone. So if you think about it in that manner...
Which would be everybody.
Yeah.
Even kids. I mean, pretty much everybody.
But we're talking about if they're active participants as a guest, they would pay to...
So I was on the commission that we put together for the complex initially, and a lot of the investors, after the complex was built, were upset that people weren't out there. They wanted to see more people out there. I feel like this is going to only discourage people from being out there, and really, this seems like, I don't know, an added expense. I'd be, I'm all for a resolution for this, to use this app for all parks everywhere, but I really don't see how this is going to be organized accurately with what we have in place at this moment.
So just to clarify, we, the city, are going to have people manned at the gates?
Yes, that is correct.
So that's how we're going to police it?
Right.
And you are correct, to your point, we had not, we had not done that in the past, but I think that's where we are trying to step in and correct issues that have happened. And this is a feasible way that we can man that, where we can make sure that we're not taking any further damage to our facilities or, you know, just making sure that we're maintaining that all together, so.
I have a question, and this might be more towards George than Ginger, or maybe both. So whenever somebody hosts a tournament, are we going to close all gates except for where we allow people in? Or are we going to say, okay, well, you only have to, you can, you only need one field, so you're only going to reserve one field? And how, so how are we going to do that?
So we did talk about this. We talked about the section where there is, where it is fenced off, and if that's the case, then if it's for a tournament, they could come into that, because there is a possibility that the public would want to use the other side for practice. So those individuals would be on there for practice and not for fee.
My biggest issue is the City of Guyman is not in the business to make money. We provide parks for our citizens, so that way our lifestyle is a little bit better and we have fun things to do, right? And so our citizens have things to do. And so I feel like they're already paying for this when they pay taxes, and we use our tax money to purchase them nice things, like a park, like a soccer complex, something fun for the community to do. It's like, we don't charge people to go down to Sunset and walk around the lake. We don't, you know, so I don't understand, like, they're already paying for this.
Maybe I might interject. Josh, I think this is intended for tournament-type activities where people pay to be in a tournament.
Right, yeah, exactly.
It's basically about the same thing as when my grandkids are playing junior high basketball and I already pay taxes for the school, but I pay five bucks at the door to get in.
Sometimes, but it doesn't, you know, sometimes you don't pay when you go to watch Kids Inc. play.
You do this year.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't know why we want to charge the fans, charge the people that...
Any competitive sport, you've always, you pay. I've never been to one that you haven't, except for Guyman.
Well, and I might, to that point, it's not a completely paid-for facility. So the City of Guyman has...
Oh, I'm aware.
We have a responsibility to pay for 1.8 million dollars, and we've got less than four months to do that. Now, this is not going to do that, but we have to be thinking about the future as well. What does that look like in five years when we've completely wore out that field? I mean, this is, it's getting a lot of heavy activity out there, more so than what we thought. I mean, again, we've probably voiced that it's a good problem to have and people are using the fields, but on the other side of it, the city is left with the balance. So how do we offset?
Excuse me, not only that, people have already done this before, have tournaments, and they were charging at the gate.
And it wasn't our revenue.
It wasn't our revenue. Somebody else did before. And we have these tournaments or these scheduled games. You know, we have the mom and the dad, grandpa come around, and I've seen more than 300, 400 people inside this complex at one time. You know, upkeep after that, clean up after that, it's quite a bit. Just to maintain that place takes more than two days for me to mow and go through the whole place and get it cleaned up again. It takes up to two days for up to three, four people out there.
George, I got it. You're saying some other entity was charging to get into the games?
Yes.
That wasn't the City of Guyman?
That wasn't the City of Guyman, and they had a tournament and they were charging at the gate. And they use our concession stand and they were selling their...
That doesn't seem right to me, but...
They were charging spectators?
Yes, for coming.
I'm not aware of that.
Selling their own stuff and they were, of course, they give our percentage for using that concession stand. That's another avenue that we need to start looking into that part, because we have a concession stand and it's not making any revenue as we speak.
I don't think that's right. Something needs to be established, and I think you guys are going down the right avenue.
I agree with you, Josh, that we aren't here to make business and all that, but at the same time, we have to at least break even and be able to maintain and keep these parks upright and where they could be nice and presentable, or they're going to end up like Sunset where they're worn down.
And then we have no money to replace it.
And no one wants to go out there and do anything.
Well, that's why it's our job to, you know, get that money going in the right direction with the taxpaying money that we already have and we're already sitting on top of.
And I would ask you to compare that to something like the city swimming pool, which we collect fees off of to offset those expenses. So we do, in fact, try to gain some revenue to be able to do that, but we know we're not going to nearly touch what the expenses are for this facility. So if we could make that kind of money to be able to offset it, that would be wonderful. But if we can't, at least we are, we're getting somewhere that will at least maintain that turf, the nets, the care that it takes for those days, because, I mean, I've seen it last summer after a tournament, and these guys come in and tell us, and we've been out here for two days picking up stuff and cleaning up, and then they have to go out and put the lines on the field, and there's just more to it than a lot of people understand.
Yeah, and that's what our tax money is for, I feel like. I feel like our tax money already goes to that. That's what we pay for parks. We've maintained parks using our tax money. I feel like we're taking the poorest part of our community that supports these soccer games and these soccer complexes, and we're asking them to pay taxes, and then we're asking them to pay to watch soccer. That doesn't make sense to me.
I have another question. So with the app that we have, or that you're proposing, are we going to go to a required cashless concession?
You can do that. You can, and the city could, so one of the ways that they presented it to me as if we utilize the app for concessions, it's a... it to me as if we utilize the app for concessions, it's a it's a totally different setup in the background for them. We give them an iPad that belongs to us, and it'll have incremental dollar amounts. So let's say it has one dollars, one dollar, two dollars, five, ten, whatever. So if they're adding it in, they can say, well, we sold five dollars worth of bottled water. They just hit five dollars. They can accept the payment and process it right there. They can turn it back in. They turn back in the iPad. And then that should give the remaining balance of what what we typically collect for the percentage of being able to use that concession stand. So they'll give us more of a true number. And and I hate to say a true number, but we don't see the other side of it. So we don't really have any way of knowing, you know, is that, you know, was it a hundred dollars in sales this weekend? Or was it a thousand dollars worth of sales this weekend? So.
Also, when we're taking consideration what these people, this organizing these tournaments, they charging every team member for a fee, fifty, sixty dollars per. So.
I pay it. So I.
They they make some money every time they're using our fields for free. Now we have Kids Inc. using it. Now we have the school using it. So there's a lot of identity. If you get a Kids Inc., Kids Inc., they charge it for every kid you have over there. And they come and use our fields.
Right.
They stop using their fields. So.
Well, again, that pays into my point. I mean, because Kids Inc.'s a nonprofit, school's a nonprofit, and then anybody that's putting on a tournament out there is just trying to provide a service for the community. They're not in it to make money because they're not making money. All right. So then, okay, mom and dad pays for their kid to play at Kids Inc. And then now they have to pay again to watch their kid play? Doesn't make any sense to me. Again, you're taking the most impoverished people in our community and charging them double and trying to resurface the turf on their backs instead of the taxpayers' backs because we're already paying taxes for those things.
I totally agree with you. But when it comes on to it, we have so many playgrounds that needs to be replaced. There needs to be.
And we should be doing it with the tax money that we already have.
Okay, maybe we're getting way down in the weeds.
I have another question before we go on. It's not like, I'm not saying yes or no, but I just have a question. So before we, our our fee is five dollars, would be five dollars to get into the gate. If I'm organizing play, can I make it fifteen or twenty for me to help with my with what I'm trying to raise funds for? If I'm trying to do like a fundraiser tournament, can we change those fees for the user? Or is is it just a base five dollars?
It would just be a base. It would be a base. And so it depends on, it depends on what direction you would be trying to go with it. I think there is always room for trial with it. But I would say that the standard would be the base for it, for what we would be doing on our backend of it to actually ticket.
Okay. Because then the reason why I ask that, because I I remember that tournament where they did charge at the gate, and that was part of their fundraiser. So I didn't know if if they would be able to do that still. And we still get our part, and they would get their part, what they're fundraising for. So that's why my question.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Have a motion.
Thank you.
I will motion to approve Resolution 24 dash zero three, a resolution establishing a per person admission charge of five dollars for organized soccer play events at the Nash Soccer Complex.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Setser?
Nay.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes and one nay.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to approve the purchase and payment of new John Deere 5075E cab utility tractor, rotary cutter, and loader, including a trade in of a 2013 John Deere tractor and rotary cutter, for a total cost of fifty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-three cents from the Cemetery and Parks Department. Mr. Shannon.
In the recent budget that was passed, this has been budgeted, some restraints have put on us, anything over fifty thousand has to come through the vote of the of the council, which is a great thing. But Parks Department, I believe, the current tractor, Sheldon motor, and some other, it just wore out, basically. So and we stayed behind all last summer, if you remember right, mowing weeds and stuff. So this is very much needed. And you'll also see the, we bought it on the Oklahoma State bid. So it's probably about as good as we could get. And it got local, right?
Local.
Yeah. Buy local.
Any questions, discussion?
Well, maybe we should charge five dollars to walk around the cemetery. We could offset the cost.
I don't think we'd make much money on that.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the payment for the new John Deere 5075E cab utility tractor, rotary cutter, and loader, including a trade in for 2013 John Deere tractor and rotary cutter, for a total cost of fifty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-three cents for the Cemetery and Parks Department.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Okay, agenda item number eight, discussion and possible action to award the bid for weed and trash abatements for the fiscal year of 2024 to contractor Jose R. Ramirez Gilnez, JRC. Yes, ma'am?
Hello. So back in November of 2023, City Council did pass the bid process to start that whole bid process on that. I did publish on the newspaper twice. We sent it to every general contractor that has liability insurance with us. And we did make sure to send that through all the emails. We only had one come through for JRC for four hundred and eighty-eight dollars an hour. And we were just hoping to get them approved today so that we can cut our abatements by a few months for weeds and trash specifically.
I make a motion, we award the bid for weed and trash abatements for the fiscal year 2024 to the contractor JRC.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number nine, nine is discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for trash, weeds, and grass located at Lot Five, Block Eleven of the North Ridge addition to the City of Guyman, Texas County, Oklahoma, also known as 2217 North James. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. So I'm bringing this property up to you to present it because we have a case of grass and weeds. The house has been on the market for a while, and it finally sold, but it is unprobate. The owner, he is deceased. The son does not live here. Previously, we have abated this property for the same thing for grass and weeds. It has gotten pretty out of control again, and sent all the property documentation. They've signed everything back, but no contact with the owner, no response from them.
We're wanting to use.
Go ahead.
The approved fiscal year 2024 contractor for this.
Questions, discussion, motion?
I'll motion to approve ordinance of determination for trash and weeds and grass located at Lot Five, Block Eleven, North Ridge addition to the City of Guyman, Texas County, AKA 2217 North James.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for trash, weeds, and grass located at lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty of Block Forty Three of the original addition to Guyman, Texas County, Oklahoma, also known as 521 Northwest Sixth Street. Yes, ma'am?
Basically, the same thing. This is a property that we are having with overgrown grass and weeds, no contact from the owner. This case was actually previously taken all the way to notice of hearing, and the owner showed up and completed the job themselves. But this time, I have not had any luck getting ahold of the owner. And we're wanting to clean up the grass and weeds using our fiscal year contractor 2024.
Any discussion, questions, motion?
I'll motion to approve order of determination of trash and weeds and grass located at lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, Block Forty Three, original addition to Guyman, Texas County, Oklahoma, AKA 521 Northwest Sixth Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Setser?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 11 is discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for dilapidated structure at lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty of Block Forty Three of the original addition to Guyman, Oklahoma, also known as 521 Northwest.
Thank you.
No. Also known as 521 North.
What's it say?
Yes, so it's the same property, and they do have a dilapidated structure located in the backyard, same thing, send all the appropriate mail, no response back, but they have answered back on the letters that I have sent. This one I would like to take it up for bids, and estimated cost would be between fifty-five hundred and six thousand. Estimated dates to complete the work would be in April 10 through April 17.
So it's for the structure in the backyard?
Yes.
To remove it completely?
Yes.
Why?
I'm sorry?
Why?
The structure is dilapidated. It is caving in. Some of the paneling, it's kind of hard to see because it is in the backyard, but you can see that it's starting, the roof of it is starting to caved in.
But the fence looks good, so it doesn't jeopardize.
They still have to maintain it. And on the front end of the property, they do have a chain link fence that is not very secure. Anybody could potentially get into the property and hurt themselves.
I will motion to approve order of determination for dilapidated structure at lots eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, Block Forty Three, original addition to Guyman, Texas County, Oklahoma, AKA 521 Northwest Northwest Sixth Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Nay.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes and one nay.
Agenda item number 12 is discussion and possible action to approve order of determination for dilapidated structures at Lot One in the north half of Lot Two of Block Thirty Six of the funk addition to the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, Texas County, Oklahoma, also known as 912 North Quinn. And I think this is the one you want to table?
Yes, please, Mayor and Council. There's some recent developments. Let me just table this.
The owner's cleaning it up.
Okay, I make a motion to move or table item 12.
Have a motion and second to table?
I'm sorry, you seconded? Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action to nominate up to two candidates from Guyman for three year terms for the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, OMAG, Board of Trustees commencing on July 1, 2024. I'm going to jump the gun. I'm just with the city manager, and he's interested, so I'm going to nominate Mr. Shannon.
I'll second that.
Any other, we have a motion and a second, or are there any other nominations? Anybody else want to jump in there? Timeout. Can I go forward? So I have a motion and second to nominate city manager Mike, interim city manager Mike, OMAG's board of directors. But there'd be an election. May you win this stuff?
Maybe.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes for Mike Shannon.
All right. Now, anybody else want to jump in there? We've still, we got one more open.
I'd nominate Jason if he wants to. I said I would nominate Jason if he wants to.
I've got a lot on my plate.
He's got a lot on his plate. He's got three boys. All right. Moving on, agenda item number 14 is discussion and possible action to appoint a new member of the Parks Board to fill a vacancy with the term ending in 2026. Staff report and applications attached. Mr. Shannon, do you have any information you want to enlighten us?
It's pretty straightforward. I think you've got a couple of applications.
So we have Larry January and Cynthia Janine Hernandez Campos.
Are any one of those here tonight?
Janine's across the street rehearsing for the musical that we're currently in.
And point of information, I believe Mr. January is on the golf ball currently. So it's up to y'all to make a choice. Do I have a nomination?
And both of these are one in the Parks Board.
Is is Miss Miss Hernandez on any other boards? Nope.
Not that I'm aware of.
I would like to motion Cynthia Janine Hernandez Campos for the position.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Thank you. Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 15 is new business we have done. Agenda item number 16 is public comments. Anybody have any public comments tonight? Any public comments? All right, we'll adjourn as the Guyman City Council. We'll reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. We've done number two. Agenda item number three is approve the meeting, the minutes of the regular meeting of the January 9, 2024 meeting.
Make a motion to approve the regular minutes for the January 9, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in two seconds.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action to approve pay application for payment number six for Gates Utilities LLC in the amount of 125,637.50 for the Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project. Mr. Shannon, you have anything you would like to say?
I don't have anything, but I think that Northeast Tank is, I think I'm going to start sterilizing it this week.
And where is this actually located?
Northeast, on North Parliament Road.
It's out by the one that's ordered there.
I make a motion to approve pay application for payment number six for Gates Utilities LLC for the amount of 125,637.50 for the Northeast Ground Storage Tank Project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to authorize ORF dash two seventy-one dispersment request number five in the amount of 87,131.92 for the ORF dash twenty-one dash oh oh thirty-five dash CW note AMR project to reimburse the city for additional meters and equipment purchased purchased for the AMI project.
Till the end of the project, because this is what the city has basically went out and purchased, and we're just getting paid back for what we went out and paid for.
Are we done installing all of these meters?
Unfortunately, no, ma'am, we're not.
Okay.
There's numerous reasons why. I don't, I don't even like to say supply chain, but yeah, that's part of it. It's hard to get the meters now, and it's just day by day.
How many more do we have potentially?
Am I say, how many more meters? Tracy, about three seventy-five, say four, less than four hundred out of forty-five hundred. Yeah, the bigger, yeah, the bigger meters.
I heard in the news, Amarillo was doing this, too.
Yes, I think Amarillo, I mean, they're. Yes, I think Amarillo, I mean, there's quite a few communities and I don't know if that might be some reason why it's a supply chain, but we, it's still aggravating to me. We had our name in the pot first, but we're still having troubles getting, getting meters. So, yeah. I think technology is catching up and everybody's realizing that these meters register every drop, every drop is revenue to that city. So a lot of, a lot of big towns and small towns are going to this, so.
Make a motion to authorize ORF 271 disbursement, disbursement request number five in the amount of $87,131.92 for the ORF 210035 CW note to reimburse the city for additional meters and equipment purchased for the AMI project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number six, new business. We have none. Agenda item number seven is public comments. Anybody have any public comments? Any public comments? Agenda item number eight is reports from city manager and council members.
Mayor, I, I've got, it probably, it could have been under new business, but staff and I, we've been working on the gas rates. As everybody knows, you're paying a lot of money. We can deduct that, we'd like to call a special meeting to pass the resolution. Gas prices have come down, be saving about $3.23 in the MCF and this all materialized in the last six, seven hours. So if we could, your schedule, I think the city clerks provided you all for February, we'd like to go ahead and get this enacted before we start reading again and start billing again.
That's for how long?
Uh, it'll go towards the end of the year until we find some little cheaper, cheaper gas to add to it. So it's, it's coming down, I swear.
So you'd like for each one of us to decide good times and reply to the city clerk?
I think I'll just let, we have to have 48 hours. Am I correct on a special meeting?
I'm okay with the 16th. That'd be great.
I can do the 16th.
16th, one o'clock?
One o'clock?
Or six o'clock in the morning?
Yeah.
Six o'clock in the morning would work great for me.
She likes those early mornings.
Yeah. I can do one o'clock in the afternoon.
Can't.
Sorry.
Whatever you, I just threw that out there.
Okay.
We can meet anytime you want.
I cannot. I'm going skiing. You said 16th?
16th is Friday, this Friday.
Yeah, that's right.
We can do it without you.
So I'm good with the 16th?
Yeah, I think I am.
I'm good with the 16th. 6:00 AM?
It's actually better for me than one, but.
I know you are.
How about?
I have to have the agenda posted by 6:00 AM tomorrow morning.
How about seven?
If we have it.
Oh, how about seven?
Seven.
I can do seven.
Seven work for you.
Works for me.
It should be a relatively quick meeting.
Yeah.
Can we get the resolution by 7:00 AM?
Yep. They have it tomorrow.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
AM.